There we go.
Are we live now?
We have been live, but you've been muted. You're unmuted now.
Oh.
So they all know where we're going after the meeting?
To Wolf's house. He's having that steak cook up.
And so.
We had one for you that I haven't eaten.
Oh, I feel you're paid. I'll take it home.
I haven't eaten.
Are you ready, Michelle?
Ready.
What about you, Tony? Ten seconds.
Ten minutes or ten seconds?
Seconds. I'm counting.
Well, no.
Sixty dollars for a hundred.
Oh, man!
All right, I'd like to begin this meeting. Let's rise. Would you please believe this in moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call, please? Please speak into your microphones.
Commissioner Ann Sardi.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Commissioner Bondic.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sussel.
Here.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Here.
Commissioner Lawton.
Present.
Thank you. So then that will bring us to communications, proclamations, and presentations. Commissioner Lawton?
Yes, thank you. That statement? During last Tuesday's meeting, we had a discussion on language for an anti-racism resolution. At some point during the discussion, the disproportionate number of African-American lives lost through abortion was grossed. This tugged at my heartstrings, and though I never intended the language to be added to the resolution, I did speak to the issue. I quoted an article and I read statistics from the Michigan Department of Public Health. It was the wrong place, and it was certainly the wrong time for this issue, and I apologize. My statements were made out of compassion and sadness, not criticism or condemnation as was portrayed in the news article. I am a woman of deep Catholic faith and love for the sanctity of life. I am truly sorry for any hurt inflicted. It was not my intention. I can do in all forms of racism. Most sincerely, Melinda Lawton. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other proclamations? No? Okay, then we will move on then to approval of the board's minutes. Do we have any? I don't have any listed at all. All right, thank you. Then we move then to approval of the agenda, and we have one late addition. I put at G under administration for the polycom.
Commissioner. We also have one carried forward that should not have been, and that's item 4B, so if we can just take that off the agenda.
I'm sorry, 4B?
4B.
Oh, okay, you want to remove that?
Yes.
All right.
And then I'll move to approve the agenda. You guys change as I amend.
I have support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed at the same time? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. So then that will bring us to public comment, and we've received many letters and emails. Sorry? We've received many letters and emails which will be unfiled. For anyone who desires, they leave them. And if you want to call in, the number is 231-256-8109.
And tell them if it's busy to keep calling.
Yeah, and if it's busy, keep calling because there'll probably be someone on there. So it's 231-256-8109. We do have people here for public comment as well.
There's one on the phone. I'll take him first.
We'll take the one on the phone first. All right, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, could you state your name and make your comment? Do you have five minutes?
Absolutely. My name is David Willis, and I am the Director of Labor Services for the Michigan Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council. Honorable Commissioners, if I may, we currently represent your road and command officers, your dispatchers, your corrections command, and your corrections officers. The Board has twice reviewed the issue of the first responder hazard pay premiums program, and we are again pleading for your consideration. There were several concerns expressed by the Commissioners during the last two meetings, and I would again like to address them. As of this morning, I had personally spoken with the Michigan Treasurer's Office, and they have stated there are still many funds left over in this program currently, and that they still intend to notify all beneficiaries prior to the September 30th payment date. Secondly, there was discussion given on pension contributions. The Act specifically states, "Any payment or reimbursement made under this section, whether paid as a lump sum or hourly wage enhancement, shall have no effect in determining any employee's average compensation as provided by any contract or other provision of law." There's been discussion of the financial impact of accounting. I would like to point out the great financial condition Leland Hall County is in. As of December 31st, 2019, as reported to the State of Michigan through your certified financial reports, the county had currently at that time a cash-to-expension ratio of over 58%. Since 2015, it has reached over 60%. The best practice by the Government Finance Officers Association standard is between 10 and 20%. Additionally, through your fiscal responsibility, the Leland Hall County assets to liabilities have increased from 12.7% to 17.91% since 2015, which is exceptional. The county has substantially outperformed its budget every year since 2015, and has maintained over or just under a $9 million fund balance since then. There has been discussion of the cost of this program to honor these heroes with $1,000. It has been discussed that there's a 10% to 17% total cost. I believe these are rough estimates that Social Security would account for 6.2% by the employer and 1.45% by Medicare. I believe there's a 0.6% for the federal unemployment tax, and I believe the county is self-funded for its unemployment if an employee collects, which I am assuming. At the $1,000 scenario, the county has a potential cost of around $76.50 per employer employee if it gives the entire hazard pay of $1,000. Even if we estimated the cost to the county at 10%, it's $100 for eligible employee at a $5,900 cost. I would provide a signed agreement to Mr. Janik tonight agreeing to no payment if there is no notification before September 30th and no pension contributions to be made on behalf of the bargaining units that we represent. We have all witnessed the negativity towards our first responders. We have peppered first responders with disparaging remarks suggesting they are the root of the problems. First responders are always the first contact that public has with government, therefore making it easy to lash out at them. They all have families to share in receiving all the negativity and hate in communities from across the country. Each community in Michigan has recognized their heroes in different ways. We have one group that has honored their ministers, deputies, and corrections officers with receiving an extra $5 an hour for the past two months and will continue to receive that till the end of the year. We have other groups that have given extra vacation time and/or compensation time as gestures of appreciation. Sheriff Markovich has twice explained to the Board the added pressures and risks his employees at the sheriff's office are experiencing each and every day since the pandemic began, and I thank you truly for speaking up on behalf of employees.
You're gonna have to conclude, sir. You're gonna have to conclude. Your five minutes are up.
Thank you. I'll finish at the end.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So now I think we bring someone in? Yeah, please. And then if someone else wants to call, we can call in at this time.
I know most of you. I'm John Evans. I used to be in Cedar, but now I've moved to Elmhaw Township. I'm calling, I'm talking to you about this racism thing. I appreciate your apology, Ms. Lawton, but it's racism. It was when you stated it and all the discussion. Racism, you know, you can't even determine race because there's no definition of it. All human beings are the same species. You might give us seed differences, but that's all. Color, skin color, whatever, whatever. All of us here together. I'm pretty dark. I grew up in Highland Park. I was there for the riots. I know what racism was. I went to school with black kids. I went to school with Arab kids. A whole mixture of things. We have to teach better than that. And if you can't agree, call it bullying. If you don't like race, call it bullying. When you bully people for whatever reason, you know, it's just crazy. We're all people. We're all interchangeable. We can all mate together, you know? We can all make babies, all the human beings. It's not like a species. So treat people that way, please. Let's talk about it. We have an issue. We have police that have killed many black people. They've also killed other people. Anytime they pull a gun, I was taught when I was teaching gun safety at Duane's A, you pull a gun, you better be ready to kill somebody. So let's try to teach people not to pull guns. The other thing, last thing I want to say. This Board's got to get together, because you three vote no, we still pass stuff. You're on board. You don't get a pass for early childhood education. You can't stop it. We passed it. Handle it. Make sure it's well done. Don't tell me you don't like it or whatever, or all the excuses. The Board, you're responsible for everything. All of you. Whatever you pass, get on board, do it the best you can. Whether you really like it or not, it doesn't really matter. You can't get away from it. You're responsible, no matter how you voted, because of the Leland Hall County Board. You're responsible for it. Every dime you spent or didn't spend. Why did we wait two years to get the recycling? What happened? Two years to find a recycling center? Did we get the money back? Where's the money? I don't know. I'm not worried about the money particularly, but where's the money? Did you save me any money? I've been here over 50 years paying taxes. I've never seen a tax reduction. We've never reduced the taxes. Frankly, we really haven't. You, as a Board, you passed and pressed and never raised taxes either. Voters raised them because we wanted it done right. But you haven't taken any initiative on your own that I can remember. You, I'm talking about the Board, the historical Board. I don't know what you're doing. Watch over the thing. Do what we need to do. Take care of the kids. Take care of the policemen. Give them the support they need. I'm not. I'm not in favor of it, but I also know black lives do matter, and they're the ones being killed. Among some others. I was in Detroit. All the people killed, almost all, as I remember, in Detroit were killed by policemen. Some riot we had. You could check that out, most of them were all police. I appreciate you listening to me. I've been here, I've been around, I'm still around. I come into this building, you know, I cheer and all that stuff, so thank you. I'm done, thank you. I'm sorry, I took a walk.
Do you have someone on the phone?
Thanks.
Okay, ma'am, right now we have someone on the phone. I'm gonna push on speaker, okay? Okay, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Elena Chika-Mozer. I live in North Port, and I wrote a letter to the Board of Commissioners that I'm calling in because I would like to read it out loud. To the Lelandau Board of Commissioners, I grew up and have lived most of my life in Lelandau County, and I have never been so ashamed of where I'm from. To begin with, Eckerly's blatantly racist and dehumanizing outbursts demonstrated that racism and white supremacy are alive and well, not only in the hidden corners of our community, but also in its elected officials. On top of that, last week's Board of Commissioners meeting and its attempts to draft an anti-racism resolution made it clear that some members on this board are severely misguided in terms of what it needs to be anti-racist. First, excluding the word "race" or any specific mention of marginalized racial or ethnic groups does not constitute an effective anti-racism resolution. Yes, the ultimate goal is equity for all people, but as Black Lives Matter supporters continually have to explain to confused bearers of the All Lives Matters slogan, we must focus specifically on uplifting and protecting the lives and rights of black people and other people of color because of the racially unequal state of our society. Second, considering that police are the racial group protected under this resolution is both completely inaccurate and inappropriate. Police are not a race in any definition of the word. As movements condemning racist police violence sweep the nation, suggesting that police should be protected in an anti-racism resolution is incredibly insensitive and shows that you are eager to protect anyone but the people of color that this resolution should be about. Third, Commissioners Lotner and Muddick's attempts to insert their anti-abortion propaganda into this document is outright disgusting. If you are interested in researching and including real issues, such as the fact that the maternal mortality rate for black and indigenous women is two to three times higher than that of white women, or the lack of access to reproductive and general health care for many people of color, please do. However, the Lotner and Muddick's attempts to oppress women's rights in the name of anti-racism distract from the real issue at hand and is a despicable political move. Shame on you both. Finally, it is clear that this anti-racism resolution is thoroughly needed in our community. I suggest that the entire Board of Commissioners take this as an opportunity to educate themselves on what it means to be anti-racist, and how as community leaders, they could work toward racial justice through policy and practice. The resolution should absolutely include data and examples of racial inequity specific to our community, and it is imperative that you include people of color in this conversation and in the drafting of the resolution. This is your opportunity to show our community and everyone else who is watching that Lelandau is not filled with racist bigots like Eckerly. Please do your job as leaders in this community and start working to address racism in a substantive and educated manner instead of hiding under weak broad statements that do nothing. Ignoring racism will not make you go away. I look forward to reading what you come up with and seeing how you work to address racism within Lelandau's local government and in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I don't know how to follow that, except just to tell you my opinion. I don't believe that is the case of the Lelandau County Board of Commissioners regarding any kind of racism. I don't believe it at all. So for what it's worth, my name is Paul Postal.
Could you state your name and where you're from?
I'm doing that right now.
Oh, all right.
My name is Paul Postal, and I currently live in the Kingsley area, and I am a business agent for the Fraternal Order of Police. My employer was basically giving his five-minute speech that turned into a little bit later, and I just wanted to finish up where he left off. It was only a paragraph, so my five minutes will be about two minutes, if that's all right with you. You have the opportunity to send a message to your deputies, dispatchers, and corrections officers that during this time of worldwide pandemic and social unrest, the likes none of us which have witnessed in our lifetime, a big thank you by spending $100 or less for 59 dedicated employees who work days, afternoon, midnights, on the weekend and holidays, in good weather and in bad, and sometimes in conditions or situations none of us hope to be in. I respectfully ask that you approve the application for this grant and apply as soon as possible. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. Thank you. You're welcome.
Now we have someone else on the phone here, please? Okay, ma'am, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ivy Knight Pickle. I live in Elmhurst, Michigan, and although I don't live in Lelandau County, I vacation there quite frequently, and so I've been following this anti-racism resolution situation quite intently. And I have a few things I wanted to say, a few problems I wanted to address. First of all, I have a great issue with your board's approach to racism as a whole. It's very clear that you're not quite sure where to begin. I have a problem with your board's assessment of racism as a very broad topic, something that can be different for all people, that's not true. Racism is defined as prejudiced against a protected people or group based on skin color. It is not based on occupation. It is not something that can be changed. And I believe that this war definition that you have presented to the public really reflects that your board is not properly educated on this subject. While I respect and admire that you are passing an anti-racism resolution, and I'm glad that you're making steps for progress, I would really encourage that your board re-educates and re-evaluates all their stances on the subject so that true progress can be made. Because I do not, really do not believe that true progress can be made with your definitions and with your beliefs as my stance today. As the previous caller mentioned, black voices, voices of people of color do need to be respected, listened to, and reflected in this resolution, and I would highly encourage you to include them in the conversation as well as to read their perspective and to educate yourself with their perspective so that you can broaden your understanding. Finally, I want to close by commenting specifically on the comment made on black abortion. I did not think that this was appropriate, and although an apology has already been made, I was really like to emphasize the fact that there is a separation between church and state. And although I respect and recognize your position as a Catholic follower, I do not believe that those beliefs should ever influence your governmental policies or comments. I really thought that that was inappropriate, and I do not think that that should ever influence your decisions on topics such as the government. And that is all. Thank you, and I hope that you listen to my comments and that you take them to heart and that you consider them when you pass this anti-racism resolution.
Thank you. You state your name.
Yes.
Do you have five minutes?
Thank you. My name is Charlene Verchave. I'm from Solon Township, Lelandau County. And of course, I would like to also have a little add-on to the racism definition of racism. I did look it up in the dictionary, and then I'm going to build on that a little bit. Racism, a belief in the superiority of a particular race. Prejudice based on this. Antagonism towards other races. Okay? So my own off-the-cuff definition of racism to maybe give some more definition to what we're struggling with here. Racism is bullying. Racism is hatred in practice. Racism is when a person or a group of people targets and objectifies certain races of people or those who are different from them. To degrade them, threaten physical violence, exclude them, threaten physical violence, exclude them, murder them, and in many cases genocide them. So it's a huge issue that really, really could be. And if we're not certain about what genocide means, that's, examples of it are when Native Americans were being conquered in North America. There was much genocide through spreading smallpox, germ warfare and things like that. And the Jewish people who suffered in millions in Germany through gassing and firing squads, et cetera. So further, racism is where the self-ascribed entitled, brought on by learned behaviorisms, strive to oppress the excluded person or group from the same justice and fairness the entitled group enjoys. For example, when I witnessed, this was years ago though, I witnessed a Lelandau County judge sentence a young Native American tribal member to five years in prison for his third drunk-driving offense, while an entitled white male businessman finally received two years after two years of imprisonment for 27 drunk-driving offenses. There's a big gap there. This is racism in practice right here. It goes on with, it's not just black, it's Native American, it's Hispanic, it's even white, white people. I mean, there's, it's an all-encompassing behaviorism, and it's an attitude. Racism roots from the lack of education, civility, and hatred in practice. When it comes to our responders, I hold them in higher regards than most other professions because they are out, they are putting their lives on the line to save lives. In the circumstances that our law enforcement and judicial system abuses their professionalism to allow racist behavior, then we must retrain, reassess, rewrite our public policies so that they are safe and fair for all peoples, including race, creed, gender, et cetera. Thank you, and I hope you take some of these definitions to heart so that you can maybe, it helps to sort of solidify where you're going with this and focus on it. Thanks.
Is there anyone else on the phone?
Not on the phone.
No? Is there anyone else? I'll please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Julie Morris. I live in Casson Township, and I'm running for Lelandau County Commissioner in District Seven, Casson, in Solon Township. I've struggled for the last week about how to respond to the racism displayed by elected officials on the Lelandau County Commission and the County Road Commission. I am appalled by the comments made by the four commissioners. I could define racism, social justice, inequity, and write a definition about each of them, but I suspect my words would fall on deaf ears. I'm going to take a different tack tonight. I'm going to borrow one of Michelle Obama's themes in her speech to the Democratic National Convention. I'm going to speak about empathy. Empathy is being able to see something from another person's point of view. I taught for 25 years in two urban school districts, the Kansas City Missouri Public Schools and the Milwaukee Public Schools. My students were primarily people of color. I've watched and grieved as my students, their families, and our shared community endured systemic racism. I've watched as my friends and colleagues were stopped by police officers for driving or walking while black. I have a student whose father was killed while in custody, in police custody. It's been 10 years since her dad died. I can still see her dad at our school, waiting to pick up her little brother from school. She grieves to this day, and I grieve for her. I wish that I could fix her sorrow, but I cannot. What I can do is speak up as a person who is well aware of her own white privilege. If you do not know that racism is rampant in our country, then you have not been paying attention. I cannot and will not let elected officials in our county spew racism without speaking up. Lelandau County is a community. Our community members include, among others, black, Hispanic, and Native American members. I think our community is as appalled at these commissioners' comments as I am. The racism of sub-commissioners does not represent how the majority of us feel. I, for one, would like to have a more racially and ethnically diverse community in Lelandau County. I have two suggestions for our commissioners. And my paper is being willful. First, I suggest that you invite Northern Michigan E3 to speak before this board. Secondly, I suggest that the commissioners attend Understanding Racial Justice, a five-week introductory training program for white folks living in Northern Michigan. This training is offered by TitleTrack. They have a new cohort starting Sunday, September 20th. I registered this morning. I'm eager to do the work of learning and growing as a community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. There's no one else on the phone? Is there anyone else up in the hall? Seeing no more calls and no more people who come to public comment, we'll move on then to our action items. And the first item on it is Sheriff's Office Secondary Road Patrol Plan. Sheriff?
I move that the Board of Commissioners allow the Sheriff's Office to apply for the special, I'm sorry, for the fiscal year 2021, secondary road patrol grant. And if the grant is awarded, participate in the secondary road patrol program.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. And that brings us to acceptance of the donation. Commissioner Lotner?
I would move to allow the Sheriff's Office to accept a donation of $5,000 from an anonymous citizen to be placed in the Sheriff's Office General Donation Line 674.000.
Sorry, Mark. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. So then that brings us to planning and community development, acceptance of the capital improvement plan. Commissioner Russell?
Yes, I move to accept the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Plan for Lelandau County.
Support.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. And that brings us to information technology. Commissioner Anserd?
I move to approve the purchase of Office 365 Conversion Project with safety net in the amount of $10,050, with funds to come from Data Processing Fund Number 636.
Support.
So that's six, or 365?
Mine says 636.
Okay.
Is that correct? I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's Office 365. I got it mixed up here. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. And that brings us to clerk's office, the Calvert vacancy.
About the towers?
Oh, I think, or a, the, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, the towers. The proposed government center RFP update?
Good evening. Wanted to give you a bit of an update of the information we're able to get this week. Unfortunately, it's not all the information that we were hoping, but it is some information that the board can take into consideration this evening. We did have some further discussion with the engineer that built the tower, Swagger Tower. One of their engineers was able to get back in touch with us. One of their engineers was able to get back in touch with us and reassure us that reinforcing that tower would be a possibility. The only limitation would be we may not be able to get five co-locations out of that tower when it's all said and done. Realistically, between three and four, which to do everything that the board intends for that tower to do. I'm sorry, have you got something?
No. Commissioner Sutis Little?
Matt, are there four locators on there currently?
No, there's only one ISP on that tower right now. It would be four, three to four co-locations beyond the county-owned equipment on the tower. So realistically, go ahead.
We don't have any of the other cellular folks on that particular tower, then?
Not currently, but when we reinforce it, we would be able to get three to four co-locations on there. But we would be able to get the AT&amp;T and Verizon that we would hope to get on that tower, plus one to two ISPs.
Okay, thanks.
So, so when you say three to four, does that account, does that include our equipment or is it plus our equipment?
It would be plus our equipment. So our equipment on the tower, plus three to four co-locations.
Okay, yeah.
So, it's going to come down to what the board would like to do with the new tower. If they, if it is the board's opinion that five co-locations is what we need to do to have as much availability as possible, the power bid from the local bidder is very much in line of what that cost would entail. If we, if we figure that perhaps five is not necessary, we could pursue other options.
Any questions or any statements, Bob? I mean, I guess I would just assume there would only be one tower, even if we can't get as, if we can get a couple of cell phone on there and a couple of ISPs, I think that's sufficient. We don't need to do a whole nother tower to get one more up there. How does that go with the lift? Commissioner Sutis?
Matt, another question first. As we know, some of the ISPs have heavier, larger equipment. So when you're saying three to four, are we talking ISPs that would have equipment in the range of the one company that's on there right now, the one ISP that's on there now? Or would it be able to support larger equipment and heavier equipment, like more like a cellular?
The three to four co-location would be the maximum number of equipment per elevation. So if we did have the ISP that would have heavier equipment, they would equate to one co-location. Whereas we do have partners that are ISPs that don't use quite as heavy equipment, they could, we could have multiples that would equate to one co-location.
That is, it does cut down your options that, you know, we can look at quite significantly potentially, which means less service, less, more affordable service because competition is, you know, presents that. I think if we were to pursue the idea of raising, as we discussed, some of the other platforms, some of the other bases and the towers, I should say reinforcing the bases and raising the towers, that may make up for it. But you have terrible, terrible internet coverage in the middle section of our county and also over in the Leland area. So that won't be helped a great deal unless we can get ISPs that, whose equipment allows them to broadcast private, and many of them are able to do. So I think we should, Matt, what are your feelings on it? Do you have a recommendation?
It would be my recommendation that we pursue reinforcing the existing tower. That would give us more budgetary room if we wanted to build up, reinforce other towers.
But just for clarification, Matt, you're not ready to make a formal recommendation this evening, correct?
I would like to have more information from the engineer to have a formal proposal before the board. This is the information that we were given, and I want the board to be fully aware of where we stand.
Commissioner Lotner?
No, he just answered.
Just to clarify, we're giving you an update this evening. We're not ready to make a formal recommendation, but we thought it'd be helpful for you to know the path we're on and the options. So you don't have to vote on anything this evening. Hopefully, for our next meeting, we'll have a formal recommendation with very specifics. Correct, Matt? I mean, that's your goal, right? I mean, that's our goal.
Yeah, I would hope that we would have all the information for our next meeting. You know, it was my intention to make sure the board had all the information that we had right now. So, once we have, once we have confirmation that it's not going to be as expensive to reinforce that tower, then I would very much have the board make a decision.
Commissioner Anserd?
My two cents on this is that we can't forecast how much need, you know, people are going to want to be on that tower. And we can't necessarily plan forever to be able to take care of everybody. So I would say, let's be reasonable, take the low hanging fruit that's there today and do the best we can with the tower that we got. That'd be my two cents, because money talks.
Commissioner Lotner?
Yeah, I agree with you, Tony. Also, if predictions are correct and if fiber is actually moving into our county, you know, there's, it's not going to come tomorrow, but it is coming. And as I understand, once the fiber comes in, there's not going to be a need for these towers in the future, to the degree of, we're not going to need, I'm trying to think of how it was proposed to me, we're not going to need this second tower. I believe that's how it was proposed to me. So I, but my earlier quest, I had a question or answer. The, right now we have one ISP on there. That's all that's asked to be on that tower today. We've had, we have cell phone interest, but only one ISP interest? Where's your other ISP interest?
There is other ISP interest on that tower.
Are they not on it?
They are not on it.
Okay.
There has not been cellular interest on that tower because it would not be able.
Right, right.
There is one ISP who has a contractor go on all five of the towers, but the, this tower failed in terms of the study. So therefore, I mean, it would have, wouldn't have held the equipment. So there are two other ISPs who had interest. And I agree with you, Commissioner Lotner, that definitely fiber, hands down, is the way to go. It's just, it's costly. You know, I know that the Grand Charter's Band is paying about $65,000 per mile to lay the fiber. And it is, it takes time, and you've got to work within the availability of cross loss. And sometimes you have to bore, and sometimes you have to trench. I mean, it's a complicated issue, as you were alluding to. But I think ultimately we'll get there. There is a lot of promise on the horizon for fiber. It's just going to take a long time. I wish we could plow our efforts into that and move forward in that direction because there's no question, that's far better than fixed wireless. But we have to give people something now, and that's why there was such a push for the other, you know.
Any other questions or statements? Seeing none, thank you very much. We appreciate it. So now we'll move to the Clerk's Office. Commissioner Anserd?
I move the Board of Commissioners approve that Leland County Clerk, the Office writes to fill the vacant Clerk position in her office.
Support.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Commissioner Sutis?
Yes, for the next item, which is the request to host the National Archives Display, I move the Board of Commissioners to allow the display developed and set up by the National Archives to communicate the 100th year of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, which granted one the right to vote. Display to be set up in our commission room for a period to commence September 1st and terminate September 30th.
To the board?
I think Commissioner Lotner made a very good point of why to put it downstairs. My other concern is, right now, there's very little traffic downstairs, so I don't think many people would see it. Unfortunately, our commission room is empty, and will be during the month of September, but more people flow through here than they're going to be able to see it downstairs, which is why I was recommending that. Since we're already through August practically, it makes sense to start it in September, since it is a 2020 year commemoration. We only have a few left that we could do this, so.
Commissioner Anserd?
Just a stupid question. Isn't this room locked when it's not in use?
Yeah.
I come in here, you know, it's presently locked.
Sometimes it is, sometimes it's not. If you wish to have it in here, then obviously we would keep it unlocked.
Okay. That's it. You know, we're going to put it in here, people got to be able to get in here to see. So if that's the intent, we don't want to have the door locked.
The simple answer is, if there's not a meeting in here during the day, it's locked until the first person opens it. Once there's a meeting here, it stays unlocked. So we don't protect the equipment or anything? We're not worried about it? And that seems to probably not a problem? It's not, we never had an issue. Okay. As the rest of the building, the conference rooms are all open too. Fortunately, we've never had a problem. I did talk to the lady that requested this, and they actually owned the presentation. I thought it might have been someone on loan that has to return within a certain time period. I don't know, last time, last week, you had questions about the timeframe and so forth. So they did own it, and they said they'd be willing to work with any dates you approved, and they would put it up and take it down. Commissioner Lotner?
It is significant that we entertain this tonight because today is the anniversary of the final state that had to approve it in order to pass it into law.
I noticed that President Trump had a celebration for it too. Pardon? President Trump had a celebration for it too. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. So then that brings us to Administration and Matthews.
I would move to approve the 2020, 2021 Michigan Association of County or MAC dues in the amount of $10,930, funds to come from Board of Commissioners, memberships, dues and fees, ending in eight, zero, seven, point, zero, zero, zero. Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to the Board Policy on Cash Management. Commissioner Anserd?
I move to approve the attached Board Policy on Cash Management as presented.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. So then that brings us to the Road Commission.
Yeah, if you check your email, you see that last night, late, yes, after you received an email from David Stoker addressing the three questions we had, I made copies for you, because I know you may have not been able to see it. So basically, I'll just give a quick summary on these three issues, and then you can, we didn't have any questions or deciding, we just proceed. In terms of the Road Commission, the laws changed as of January of this year, 2020, that if you wish to switch from the elected Road Commission to appointed Road Commission, it has to be approved by the voters of Leland County. Prior to January, you as a board could have made that decision. The law has changed, and therefore, if you wish to switch, you have to petition, put it on the ballot, and the people of Leland County have to vote to support that. However, in terms of Dan Mator and Public Works, that's a decision that you as a board can make. And Mr. Stoker outlined, I won't go into it right now, but it really is a decision that you as a board member can make. Who serves on that, and you have the right to appoint people, it does not have to be tied in to the Road Commission. That decision was made by a previous board to have those people serve on it. That's not a provision of the law. You have the right to appoint people, as you do to other boards and commissions and committees. Also, in the past week, I've got a lot of calls from people interested in the process to apply for the Road Commission. So I said, I kept, I've been keeping track, I know some of you have got calls also, and I said, either this meeting or next month, you have a formal statement how you wish to proceed. I'm not sure if you want to proceed with switching the process, because that would probably the earliest you could do it. I'm guessing it would be 2022, the next general election.
We don't want to wait that long.
I don't think, I assume you didn't want to do that. So I told, I told people that were interested that we would contact them once you make a formal decision. Would you do the last two times with Mr. Noonan died, and then when Mr. Bowen resigned? You placed ads in the paper, you picked a specific deadline date where people could apply. We simply asked them for a letter and any other material that they wished to present it, something, presented resumes, something, a simple letter, and then you picked a date where you interviewed the candidate. The law says you must fill the vacancy in a reasonable time. It does not specify the timeline.
Any comments or suggestions? Commissioner Anserd?
My two cents on this is that we should move forward with the process of selecting a replacement for the open position, and that, you know, I don't know what the timelines as far as posting and the paper and all that, but, you know, we should move forward with it for next month, if that's possible.
If you, if you want to stick with that, we could make the deadline the Friday prior to the Executive Committee meeting.
You know, if that's reasonable.
That'll give you an ad, that'll give them time for the ad to paper several times.
Okay.
People will know about it. They can apply, and then at the executive committee, we may get two applicants, we may get 20. So maybe at that meeting, you can decide how you wish to proceed with the applicants. Because I'm not sure, I imagine it happened, if you've got 25 people, you may want to whittle that list out or not, but that's up to all of you. But if you start the process now, our next executive committee meeting is September? I don't know?
I think it's the eighth.
Oh, that'd be a little tighter than. How about we do the deadline, since it must be early in the month then? Because the way it's, okay. Instead of the eighth, how about that next Friday?
Yeah. The first is a Tuesday, so.
I mean, we've got the budget, we've got, we've got, you know, elections, we've got a lot of things going on. We do, we want to, you know, rush into this? I do think we could wait till October to set up the time, you know, and hopefully, because it's going to put another burden on Michelle, I believe, if we start pushing this forward, and I think she has plenty to do already. And I'm not trying to delay it, but I'm just saying to be reasonable and give her some time. I, yes.
I would, we had talked a little bit about waiting until after the November election. You have two, two Road Commissioners running for the vacant position. I think there'd be some value in waiting until after that election and then seeing what the current Board of Commissioners looks like.
Commissioner Anserd?
I'm not sure how long you want to wait. You know, there's all, you know, if you're just going to say you don't want to overburden anybody because of the election, you know, the other side of the coin is maybe that's the time you should be doing it. So I don't know. It's, there's an open position, and it's our responsibility to fill it. I think we should fill it. But, you know, I know the board in the past has chosen not to do that, and that's fine, but I don't think that that's fulfilling our responsibility.
Commissioner Lotner?
I agree, and I have a question of, would we be burdening Laurel to do the majority of this landwork?
It's, it's easy for me to say, it would not be. It would not be overwhelming. Really, it's placing the ads and then collect, the, the actual work would be on all of you to review the candidates and make a decision. So I'll turn it around. The burden would be on the seven of you. We have the easy part. To put an ad in the paper is easy. To have people collect them and make copies is the easy part. It's up to seven of you. You're gonna have to do the heavy lifting, decide how you wish to proceed. And if you, especially if you want to interview the candidates, which in the past you have done. That's where the timeframe. And you do have already quite a few budgets being set up too.
Commissioner Rattan.
We can begin the process, and we can set the date to review applications. You know, it doesn't have to be in September or October necessarily. We could review applications, you know, that first week in November. But, you know, that'll give people the opportunity to resign an application. I don't know, that's just a suggestion.
Commissioner Suss.
Mine is a quest, sorry. Mine is a question. I know Mr. Polka made a recommendation when he was here for the gentleman who's running against him. Can people who are running also apply?
Yes, there's no guarantee that they'll be successful. Well, I guess it depends on when you want to appoint them. If you want to appoint before or after, that puts them in an awkward position, so that's a decision you have to make. I would say for tonight, what you should do is pick a deadline date for the applicants. Then you can decide after the deadline how many you get and how you wish to proceed. If you pick a date before the election, it means that anyone can apply, even the people on the ballot, because there's no guarantee that they'll be successful.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Yes, I would suggest that we proceed with putting the ad in and see how many applicants we get, and just take our time. If we get 25, we're gonna have to set up some interviews and some on, and it'll just, I think it'll flow in probably after the election. But I would hope that the two candidates that are running for that position would both submit applications to the board as well.
So we need a motion, and we want to do that. Commissioner Rattenbach.
I move that we set a date forward from now, deadline for accepting applications for the vacancy on the Road Commission.
What'd be the date, September 8th? Or 7th?
No, I, I want it later than that, because, 8th, 8th something. I mean, I said 30 days, so whatever that would turn out.
So it'd be September...
I have a calendar here.
Yeah, September 20th.
In reality, you already have four budget meetings scheduled in September, at least. Because you really have to have the budget done end of September, so Michelle can place the ad in the paper, post the budget, and approve it. So really, September is gonna be very difficult for you under the festive circumstances. So how about we say, the, if you want to go approximately 30 days, today's the 18th. By the time that the ad on paper will be next week already, the earliest. So if you go 30 days from the first ad in the paper, it'd be the 24th of September. This isn't Thursday.
Okay, so that's, that's her motion then, for the 24th of September.
Yes.
That's just a deadline date, right?
Correct.
For signing on the application. That's a two second, yes.
And then we meet early in the month in October, so we can meet on a six.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. We will meet early in the month in October, so it's just shortly after that we meet.
And you can decide how you wish to proceed.
Yeah, we need the first, first Tuesday, isn't it?
First and second Tuesdays.
Yeah.
This is the 6th and 14th.
Okay, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, that's very good.
I assume you want to hold off on discussions on the dam authority and the public works? Did you get this part done first?
Yes.
I'm assuming?
It won't be a winner project.
Yes, okay. Well, at least you now have the legal process in front of you that you can review and take some time and think about it.
So I would make a motion to accept the resignation of the letter from Mr. Tom Eckley from the Road Commission. Has this resignation from the Road Commission?
Okay.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 7-0. Commissioner Rushton.
I do believe on the next subject, which is the draft resolution, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. If I may just take a moment, I would like to thank Commissioner Wessel for his leadership in constructing the language in the resolution he presents today. He reached out to the community members, those who have had firsthand exposure and experience for input, which has helped us formulate this resolution to help combat the insensitive acts of racism. We value all human beings and recognize that we, as individuals, have attributes that are specific to us by nature and design. Our differences should be valued. And with that said, I would like to make, to make the motion to accept direct resolution number one with one minor change in several places. Whereas in paragraph one, I would like the word equity to be included after the word inclusion. Number six, I would like the word, I would like it to read advocating for equity and, oh, I'm sorry, let me rehearse that. Advocating for equality, equity, and improving the quality of life. And the numbers, did that make sense?
No, would you read it again, please?
Can we go back up to the first one?
You missed an end.
Go back to the first one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because you said you want to move equity before inclusion.
Hold on, I will clarify.
Okay.
And I'll start at, the Leo County Board of Commissioners has promoted and continues to promote diversity, inclusion, equality, and equity in all spec, aspects of county government. Number six, the Board of Commissioners is committing its full attention to advocating for equality, equity, and improving the quality of life and health for all our residents. Number seven, the further resolved statement, the Board of Commissioners will assess internal policies and procedures to ensure racial equality and equity. Racial equality, oh, let me read that. To ensure equality and racial equity as a core element in all organizational practice, practices.
I support.
May I ask, we have a lot of people watching, and they don't have a copy of the resolution. It may be helpful, Commissioner Baic or Commissioner Rushton, if someone could read the whole resolution.
You want to?
I'll be too.
Yeah.
Because they don't have access to this.
Okay, so this is a Leo County resolution, a resolution to condemn racism in Leo County. Whereas the Leo County Board of Commissioners have promoted and continues to promote diversity, inclusion, equality, and equity in all spec, all aspects of county government. And whereas racism, defined as a belief that certain races are by birth and nature superior to others, it's a very Webster, can present itself in many forms, conscious and unconscious, but often manifest through attitudes, beliefs, and actions. And whereas racism unfairly disadvantaged specific individuals and communities. And whereas communities that experience racism are more likely to experience poor health, social, economic, educational, and other challenges. And whereas the Leo County Board of Commissioners stands with the residents of Leo County in their condemnation of any form of racism and discrimination. Be it resolved that the Leo County Board of Commissioners is committed to its full attention to advocating for equality, equity, and improving the quality of life and health of all of our residents. Be it further resolved that the Leo County Board of Commissioners will assess internal policies and procedures to ensure equality and racial equity is, as, is a core element in all organizational practices. I'm sorry, did I say that wrong?
No, you said right.
Okay, be it further resolved that the Leo County Board of Commissioners will promote, support, participate in the necessary professional development, programming, to support the purpose of this resolution for all employees, commissioners, and elected officials. And be it further resolved that the Leo County Board of Commissioners requests the county clerk forward copies of this resolution to the Governor of the State of Michigan, Senator Peter, Senator Stabenon, Representative Bergman, Senator Kirk Vanderwall, Representative Jack O'Malley, the Michigan Association of Counties, and the, and the other 82 counties and local units of government within Leo County. Commissioner Lotner.
I want to thank Commissioner Rushton for making that motion, and I wanted, and she did reference that we had lots of, lots of input from not only the people that contacted all of us, but we met with Dee Cruz, Jim Petosky, Michelle Petosky, Sam Gutzinger, Marshall Collins, Holly Byrd, all who are involved in, in working on the, on this issue in our region, and I thank them. And we agreed, we had some discussion about the definition of racism, but we have that in here, and I, I think that was important to us. And I think the word equity was important to us, and thank you very much.
Any other comments? Commissioner Rattenbach.
Continuing on the same discussion, I think that we should proceed with some training from an organization called TitleTrack about anti-racism, and be able to provide that for our county Board of Commissioners and also to the staff, and maybe extend it out to other departments that, you know, aren't necessarily in our building.
Thank you. Commissioner Suss.
I would agree with Commissioner Rattenbach's suggestion. I think it would be very appropriate for us to follow up, and it fits in with the subject of the last being resolved. But I also want to join with Ty in thanking all the people who met with us. It was extremely helpful to hear and see the other people's vision, what was important. And I want to thank Commissioner Rushton for, she added some words that were important and for keeping the words that were very important to me and to others. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to say that last week, I wasn't talking about abortion. I was talking about the abortion industry. The abortion industry, from according to the American Magazine, 79% are in abortion clinics are within walking distance of minority communities. 62% are within black communities and within walking distance of that. And so I just said, and then the founder of it is actually a person who said that she, one of her goals is to eliminate the Negro population. So I'm talking about the industry that promotes abortion, and, and part of that is, is what, what I'm trying to say. That's, to me, is racism. But somehow, everybody's got it twisted so that, that that's not racism, and if, you don't see it as that, I don't know what is. So, and then the other thing that I said, when I, I talked about the police being called a pig, I was thinking of a black policeman. That was my, that's what I see on TV. That's who I see in these cities, who's being, and if I call a black policeman a pig, would that be called racism? But if I put that man in a uniform, if there's some saying now that it's not racism, that it's not okay because he's in a, the black man's in a uniform? And I have a problem with that. I think that, that they, they try to define it one way and one way only, and that's why I was looking for examples of what we're looking at for racism. And I, and I'm very disturbed by the emails and the things that I've got, and I've talked, I've sent back to people, and then they begin to understand. We're not talking about abortion and speeding. It's, it's, and I agree that it's social, economic, it's many of the other things. But it's the industry that's trying to do it. That there, that has an underlying goal, and that's what I'm seeing it. So I, you know, I'm really happy that we passed this. I'm sorry that we got sidetracked by all of this, but I think that it's important for me to say, have people to hear what I was talking about, because it certainly got misconstrued. Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Can we call a question?
Yes. Yes, this, this will have to be a roll call.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Commissioner Suss. Yes. Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ansorgi?
Yes.
Chairman Bonick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lotner?
Yes.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
Yes.
7-0.
Thank you very much.
So we will obviously modify this draft version, and I believe all of you will be here Friday for the question meeting. You can, we'll make it finalized and have it signed.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work, we want to.
And Laurel's.
I think we all sincerely tried to come up with a solution that was fair enough and encompass everyone's viewpoints and work as best we could. And I actually thought, I actually felt very good Thursday about the discussion that Commissioner Wessel and Commissioner Rushton and I had. And we had a good discussion, I thought. And I think we expressed our views and love. It's such a complicated issue. No matter what you say, it's a difficult task. So thank you for all of you for agreeing to having a 7-0 vote.
Commissioner Wright.
I just want to say that, you know, if we could have gone another day, I think in our conversation, I think we could have come to this conclusion at some point before all of these other resolutions came out, creating a little bit more confusion, I think, for the board members. But I have to say, I found it very enjoyable working with Commissioner Wessel on this, and it was great that Chet helped us. He was kind of like the mediator. So he did make some, he did make some, some.
He used to be a middle school principal, so he knows how to.
Yeah, look what I was up against, you know, two, two school, one of the superintendent and the other one principal, right? Or we used to present.
But I think it is important to clarify the process. I'm glad you brought that up. Because normally, when we pass a resolution, commissioners have at least a week, sometimes a month, to look at it, and we have internal dialogue. But I actually told several people, and I think it was on WTCM, I explained, it's such a unique process, because commissioners, Eckley's comment were made on Tuesday night. It was in the Leo County Place on Thursday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday night on the Thursday's paper. Mr. Eckley called me Friday to talk about resigning. He then officially resigned until Monday. Over the weekend, we were asked to draft the resolutions. Monday, Ms. Evans and I really tried to look at other resolutions that people passed and kind of, we really did kind of pay some other resolutions. And most of you either see them Monday evening or probably read it for the first time Tuesday, which is not the normal process. Because I think if we had the normal process in place, we would have time to have dialogue and thought and reflections and could have avoided it. But these were such a unique set of circumstances that it definitely was not the right process. Looking back, we probably should have stamped draft on the original one in big letters and just had time to look at it. But because of all of the media interest and the community interest and everything else, it's really unfortunate that this happened the way that it did. But I think the end result is a very strong and powerful resolution.
Commissioner Suss.
I, I just, reflectively, it was a difficult week, 10 days for all of us, but it...
But it, the positive side of this is it started the conversation that I think needed to be started. And I, myself, was amazed. I lost count after about seventy-five of the emails that I was receiving. And I'm sure everybody else received an equal number, not to mention the ones that came collectively to all of us. And I'm proud of people because they reached out and they expressed their opinions. And I think participation in your government is so important. And I've never seen so many folks that chose to participate. And that's a positive thing, even if it was on something that was very difficult and painful. So, we have a conversation started, and we ended up with a good conclusion here at the board. And I hope we move forward with more training and keep it going.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to another difficult situation, the CARES Act. Mr. Roushman.
I would move to allow the Board of Commissioners to apply for funding under the CARES Act for hazard pay, the hazard pay premium program for all law enforcement employees in the dispatch department and in the amount of $1,000.
Any questions or anything? Commissioner.
So, we are including 911? Is that the intent?
Is he, are being employed by the Sheriff's Department?
No.
Oh.
Is this, is this a motion?
Dispatch, no, I think we should include them.
I'm just trying to clarify.
So, I just want to make sure we understand. Right now, all you're doing, if you pass this, is to fill this application for potential reimbursement. So, the process works is if you choose to pass this, we will complete this application. We have to list the individuals, which department you work, and how much money is. We will get a response back from the state, either approving it or disapproving it. If it's approved, then we have to issue the checks, and then we will get reimbursed. If it's disapproved, you do not have to commit to making the payments.
Commissioner.
We had talked last Tuesday about doing something different and recognizing all staff and making some adjustment to this. Is there a willingness to talk about that before we approve this? Because I think, I think one was based on the other when you do.
Yes, I mean, we have a second, so the motion time is, well, we can, it's open to discussion. So, if someone wants to add or amend it, I mean, that's open too. Commissioner.
I just wanted to be clear in my motion that whoever is eligible for hazard pay under the CARES Act is, are those employees that I'm referring to? I wanted that to be specifically clear. Okay.
Sheriff Borkovich, I would hope that would include our dispatchers as well. They don't work for the sheriff's office, but they do work for emergency management. And they are included in that group when the CARES Act was written federally and administered by the state. So, I know there's a little confusion over that earlier. The total number of employees covered by that would be fifty-nine.
Let me just read off who is eligible, because I think it's important. Law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, 911 officers, local units of government corrections officials, airport public safety officers, private EMS, paramedics, ambulance operation. So, we obviously do not have many of these services. So, for Lebanon County, it'd be the law enforcement and the dispatchers.
Correct.
Other units of government can apply separately. Because the question was, you cannot apply for the township or the fire department. That's a separate, some have done that. So, from Lebanon County, for the reimbursement part, it's law enforcement or the dispatchers.
I believe the total number is fifty-nine.
Commissioner.
We had a discussion about the MERS contribution, and it's not required. But my understanding was it was up to us to decide whether we were going to include it or not include it as far as MERS compensation.
You do not, that's true, that strictly is an employer decision. There's nothing in the hazard pay that refers to MERS, which of course it would not. That's a decision between employer and MERS. So, you don't have to make that decision this evening.
Which is applying for the compensation.
You're simply today, you're either going to approve or disapprove, applying for the funds. Whether you wish to do MERS or not, that's a decision that you would have to make. If you're approved for it, then you have to make that decision. You have to pass a resolution, I believe, not to make this. Because our agreement with MERS is every type of compensation, there's MERS cost. And benefits, I was going to say cost, because there's some benefits obviously.
There's a special resolution that is set up to MERS. It has to be adopted, it's a temporary thing, you have to specify.
But, but for the CARES Act, that's a whole separate discussion.
It's a separate discussion.
Commissioner.
Yes, thank you. Part of what we talked about last time, and I still feel very strongly about, is acknowledging all of our employees. I think the word hazardous has always struck me as a bit odd. I mean, I know that the first responders' jobs are always hazardous. But the point is you're recognizing people who went above and beyond the call of duty, if you will, and to make sure that in your case, first responders, that we were safe. And in the case of our employees, that people continue to be served. The senior services, making sure to deliver all of those hundreds of meals and going to people's homes and dropping it off. The clerk's office, the building safety, who continued to operate and saw many, many, many people during that time when we're exposed at a high rate. The point is, is they all did their job and they went above and beyond. And I think it's important, in fact, more than that, for me to support this, I feel it very important that we also recognize all of our other employees. And we had talked about $500 as opposed to $1,000. I know Sheriff Borkovich had suggested $800 or $850 potentially if we were looking at cutting things back a little bit. So, I don't want to lose track of that. And I would like to know how others feel about reducing this amount or staying at $1,000, but at least going at least $500 for our employees, the rest of our employees who did perform above and beyond during this period of time. Because it should be acknowledged. And I think the word, as I say, hazardous pay has always struck me as a bit strange. I think what it is, is recognition, doing an incredible job during a very difficult time.
Commissioner.
Do we know yet if senior services is going to qualify for that stipend under?
The block grant, no. That's next on the agenda. The deadline for commies to just make a decision whether they're going to participate or not is this week. They will appoint, we are considering letters saying they were interested. But they will then assign a liaison to work with me. I don't know, there's a clause in there that said, if you look at the criteria, it's pretty general at this point, if you were delivering food to the needy.
Correct. So, we don't really have an answer on that yet. And we won't have, but by the time we learn whether we've been successful in this particular request, we should have some, a better idea.
Yes, fortunately, this, the HEROES first responders, deadline September 30th, the committee block grant, they're just starting, they're at the beginning stages. And we're not competing with other units of government. We actually have been assigned up to $368,000. And so, that is just for Lebanon County. So, whatever we do does not compete with other counties or other units of government. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But to answer your question, that's a separate program. And it's at the beginning of the beginning of the program.
And thank you for that. We all recognize that each of us has encountered certain hazards, certain situations that's put our lives in jeopardy with the advent of COVID. However, as we've discussed this several times, and I believe the sheriff came before this board and explained to us the difference between maybe getting out of your car, walking into the building with a mask on, and, you know, maybe serving a customer that may be six feet away as opposed to an accident scene where there's a requirement, it's a mandated requirement that they, you know, bring assistance to the injured person or... And I think he has explained it pretty well, so I'm not going to explain all that again. So, for me, there is a difference. Does that mean we don't appreciate our other employees and everything that they did? I don't think so. And myself, I've heard, I have seen, people have high-fived me for the support that we lend to our sheriff. And they expect us to support our law enforcement. A lot of the citizens out there are fearful for the things that they see around the country. And so, more and more, I'm getting comments, emails, saying we support a sheriff. And I think that we have an opportunity to do that with very little dollars out of our budget. And maybe down the road, we can take a look at providing an extra stipend of some sort, maybe an extra vacation day or some personal time or something, so that we can show our appreciation for our other employees.
Commissioner.
Well, we do support our sheriff. And we, I think we've shown that consistently with budget and supplies and personnel.
Absolutely.
I'm just, I'm a little bit uneasy, quite a bit uneasy, with singling out some of our employees and saying, you came when we were in COVID crisis and we're going to pay you extra even because we got this grant. But I remember those first few days, I was afraid to go into the grocery store and do the shopping because we didn't know very much about this disease. And yet, we had employees coming here every single day, meeting the public, and being across the desk from the public. And I would, I would rather take Deb Roushman's motion and cut it in half and commit to trying to do the same thing with the rest of our employees, so that we recognize everybody. And some of it comes from CARES Act, some of it comes from the HEROES Act, and some of it comes from wherever we can find it. So, that, I would like discussion of that before we vote on the motion on the floor.
Commissioner.
The reason I ask the question for clarification on the 911 is they have no direct public contact. Yes, it's a stressful job, but, you know, there are other jobs that are stressful too. And that's where the inactivity of this is, you know, I'm having trouble with. Because we actually had employees besides our law enforcement that, you know, had to interact with the public. And the 911 are included in this act even though they had no direct impact with the public. Yes, it's a stressful job, but there's a lot of stress in other jobs too. So, this is where I'm struggling. I'm with Ty on this in that I think we should be recognizing all of our employees and offering some differently than others. And yes, I understand that the law enforcement people probably have some greater risk. Probably the people in the jail are probably the highest risk, in my opinion. But, you know, they don't, you know, they get somebody coming in there, they have absolutely no idea what's with these people. At least the deputies on the road have a limited contact. Those guys are in there 24/7. And, you know, I struggle with that. So, I am with Ty in that I think we should look at a, some type of plan where everybody is treated with equity.
Commissioner.
I think that commissioners have spoken, expressing empathy for all employees. And we certainly have empathy for the police force. I, and the other emergency responders, 911, whatever. I think that we did talk in the executive committee meeting about a lesser amount. I will not be supporting the $1,000. But if the motion were amended to, say, $500, then that would allow us to maybe compensate the rest of our employees. And I like. Thank you.
Sheriff.
Sheriff Borkovich, I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I understand entirely what you're saying about respecting all the employees who had to show up to work every day and didn't have the option of staying home, whatever. But they're not mutually exclusive. One, the CARES Act covers a certain segment, which would be the police, fire, EMS, so forth, and dispatch. And it's a very, very little investment on part of Lebanon to make sure that those individuals covering the act get the $1,000. That is not mutually exclusive to recognizing the rest of the employees for their hard work. There are a lot of people that had exposure, as you said so aptly. You know, it's in grocery stores and wherever people had to be, gas stations or whatever. But these are not mutually exclusive. And for the small investment, if $1,000 was supported by the board for each of those fifty-nine people, your investment, we talked about earlier, I have not seen that scale yet. Chet was going to give me a scale. I don't know if you guys ever finished that scale.
I did last week.
I did not get it somehow, somehow I missed it. Okay, thank you. So, I have not seen the total cost, but I heard earlier tonight, it's around $76.50 per employee. That is something that's, to me, very easy to support for the low amount of investment. And I don't think it's mutually exclusive that the board recognize, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Just the facts, if you include MERS, then for now, you would, for, it'd be $4,398.20. So, it'd be $14,398.
Okay.
That cost.
If we include.
If you included MERS.
Now, what if you did not include MERS?
Well, the total, and Jen has the numbers there, maybe FICA is $4,598, workman's comp is $1,878, and I think that's it, and the rest are MERS cost.
So, for less than $6,000? You could bring fifty-nine.
That's at $1,000.
I'm sorry?
That's at $1,000.
Add $1,000, for less than $6,000, you can give fifty-nine employees $1,000 each from the CARES Act, which isn't coming out of our budget. You can still recognize the rest of your employees at whatever level you feel, you know, the support would be. And I don't think they're mutually exclusive, is what I'm saying. So, I don't want to belabor it. I just think it's important to note that it's good-hearted to support other employees as well. But this specific act is very direct in what it covers, so.
Commissioner.
Point of inquiry is really what this is about. If, I don't disagree with what the sheriff says. So, if we were to look at our employees and provide some sort of a stipend for their so-called hazardous work, would we be required to pay MERS?
It depends on if you adopt that resolution. To exclude MERS affects our final compensation for retirement purposes.
Is that a yes or a no?
It'd be your choice.
It's your choice. There's a special relevant resolution that MERS is inactive for COVID-related expenses. It has nothing to do with the department.
Okay. I just wanted that clarification to see if we would have that added expense.
You can, you can adopt the resolution by local.
To exclude that? Okay, all right. I didn't realize that was a cross point, so thank you for that.
Just to clarify, that's a separate issue that you as a board, the seven of you can make.
So, again, the only thing that we would be required with the rest of the employees is the federal FICA and the workman's comp, right? Now, if we were to give, I don't know, let's say, vacation day, that would be an eight-hour payday for each employee? Is that how that works?
Say, we'd have to agree with the union of that, that's part of a labor contract.
Okay, so.
So, that's a whole separate discussion. It sounds great in theory, but there's a lot of ramifications.
And that's why I'm asking the questions now. So, if we do go ahead and give a stipend to the rest of the employees, how does that impact their wage at the end of the year or when we go to negotiating?
Well, first of all, in the CARES Act, it says this does not impact, that's strictly for the reimbursement, so that's a separate issue.
That I understand. But what about the rest of the employees?
If we were to do, obviously, if you do the non-union, it's not an issue.
Right.
With the union, I would think we'd want to have agreement, a letter of agreement that's saying this does not impact the future wages. Because if they give 2%, next year's 2.5%, so it'll be 2.5% without any extra compensation.
Okay, so I'm just trying to throw.
We'd have to have a letter of agreement here with the unions, which I don't think will be an issue because it's your call. If they choose not to, not that they would, they simply do not have to do it. But in terms of final compensation, you're compensating, and it depends how long those people work here too. So if someone's going to retire 10 years from now, it'd have no impact. If they're going to retire a year from now, $1,000, if you do the MERS, does have an impact on them.
And how many employees do we have that would qualify under that if we included everybody? What's the employee count?
10 did a great job, you have our sheets here, and Jen, do you have the numbers there? Just hand out, I know you kept the names on it. Well, it'd be simple if you look at the.
$26,950.
Look for that second sheet, Jen, where you did the.
Yeah, I don't have a secretary at home.
It's one to get her phone, it's right there.
It's 52 people.
I was gonna say, $26,000.
Yeah, right, right. So it's 52 for the non-members in the CARES Act. And it's 60 in your CARES Act, not including anybody hired effective August 10.
And that 60 includes, the support staff includes.
Correct, right now, it includes two secretaries and four marine deputies.
And two bailiffs?
Three bailiffs.
Three bailiffs. And that's part of that number.
That's correct.
60, not 59?
Yeah, it's 60, she is correct, it's not 59, yep.
I did the numbers before the new hire on the 10th.
Okay.
I guess, I have to say, I think, I, you know, I support our sheriff, I support the deputies. But I do think our deputies are very well compensated. I do believe that this money, yes, we can bring it into the county, but I'm sure that there are other counties that are much more needy than our county and that could use this money and will use it if we don't take it. And I mean, if it doesn't get taken, it'll go back to the federal government, who's so far dead already that, you know, as I said before, they're taking not, no longer from our children, but now our grandchildren. So I can't support this anyway. And I certainly don't say that anybody hasn't been in hazard's way. I mean, we don't know about the COVID-19. You know, we're learning more and more every day. But it's to all of us. And again, we start singling everybody out. I just think that we're saying government employers, employees are better than non-government employees because we're going to give them extra money. And I think that's, you know, that's the wrong message for us to send. And I think, you know, as times get rough, as this economy gets rubber, I think that we don't want to be throwing extra money, and maybe not throwing is the wrong word, but extra money at our employees. I think we're going at this, and I think this is something that we should avoid. I really do. And it's not to say that anybody doesn't deserve it, but it's to say that we shouldn't be doing this. And I just hope that we consider that. Thank you.
Commissioner Rusk.
I think we've lost sight of the intent of the act. We didn't initiate this. This was initiated at a higher level. It affords us an opportunity to say thank you to those that serve our community in that capacity for a very small stipend. So I find it, I find it difficult to not allow this to go forward. I really do, I find this difficult. It doesn't take away from the other commissioners. It sends a message, one to our community, that we support our sheriff. And sometimes, we're looking at less than $6,000 or even if it's $10,000 or $12,000. We have no discussion or very little discussion about how we spend money on frivolous things in this county. And we all know it, we spend on frivolous things in this county. So, Commissioner Rusk.
I'd like to ask if the motion maker would amend her motion to include 500 instead of 1,000. And then we then do another motion to try to find a way to do the like thing with the rest of the employees.
It seems to me that I recall that a week or so ago, you had to hold your nose and make a motion. So I'll hold my nose and adjust my motion. $500.
Support. Any other comments?
One more time, Sheriff Borkovich. I don't believe they're mutually exclusive. I still think you get the federal money of 1,000 per employee. You can still honor and respect your other employees, the other agencies. They're not mutually exclusive, but we're self-limiting a fund that's guaranteed up to 1,000. And it's, so for instance, if you whittle that down to 500, and I'm not looking a gift horse in the mouth, but if you whittle it down to 500, then that's just 500 that won't come to Lillenaw County. You're still going to have to come up with money for the other employees. And it's not like you can take 500 of that for the law enforcement, 500 for everybody else. I still feel very strongly it should be 1,000, and I won't make any more comments other than that. But I do think it's very important to know they're not mutually exclusive. You can do whatever you want as a board for those other employees, and I would encourage it. So, thank you.
Commissioner Rusk.
Clarification, please. Motion maker amended the motion, did the support amend the motion? Does the support have to also amend the motion?
Yes, and you made the second.
The second amendment is okay. You change your motion.
I thought I was support.
Commissioner Altman made the second.
She seconded it.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought both of you had, okay, I'm sorry.
I would like this motion to go to roll call first before it is amended. I don't.
So you're not okay with the amendment?
Correct.
Okay, so then it stays the original at $1,000?
And then Commissioner Kim amended it.
I do have one more question, please.
I'm sorry?
Without paying MERS, without paying the MERS.
That's a separate.
We would do that separate. It would be our intent to not pay the.
You're applying to see if you will get reimbursed.
Right, okay. So then we would look at that later if we are approved.
That'd be a separate discussion. You have either tonight, depending what you want to do after this, or when we get a response from the state.
Looking to know if that's our understanding. Because I said, I was. It's around $8,000. About right?
Commissioner Sulu.
Point of order first, I'm a little confused as to what we would be voting on. Is there an amendment? There is no amendment on the floor.
Anyone can make an amendment, there has not been one. She was going to amend it, but the Senate didn't okay it, so it stays the same.
So I will make that. If no one's made the amendment, then I can make the amendment.
Yeah.
And I make the amendment to have the amount be 500 instead of 1,000. And I appreciate what you're saying, Sheriff Borkovich. And I also feel very strongly that we just passed a resolution that we put the word equality in there.
We have to have a second before you speak.
Before I talk, sorry.
Good point.
I was saying, we just passed a resolution that has the word equality in it in addition to equity. And I think we need to support what we just resolved. And equality is very important to most of our employees. And I very much appreciate the first responders. And as Ty has said, we have supported, we will continue to support everything you need. And I'm pleased that we can do this and acknowledge with $500 extra as you're paying because they do do an outstanding job and it's deserved.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Rusk.
Another point of order, and perhaps it hasn't been clear. I understood we could have a separate motion on the employees. So this motion is for law enforcement?
Right.
And we can still do a separate motion?
This is only on law enforcement?
This is whether we should apply for.
I understand, I just, I guess what I want to make is that we can apply for grant and reimburse those employees at $1,000. We can still pass a motion to support our employees on this side of the room. I love everything you said about the equality, but the problem is, somebody higher up chose other employees to be eligible for this money. So we didn't make the rules, do we want to accept them? So that's my only, that was my intention, is to also recognize people on this side of the street. But the $1,000 would be reimbursable if it, unless we're turned down, unless the money runs out.
Was it up to 1,000 or wasn't it an amount?
No, it was up to 1,000. You can pick any amount that you wish.
So the people whose decision gave a range.
In the application, we have to put down, if you approve it, the specific amount for each area that's eligible.
So it was an option left to the individuals.
Commissioner Rusk.
And with that, when we have the discussion about whether we do compensate or don't compensate, we can decide if we want to pay $500 or $5,000 to our other employees. Two separate issues, so. I look forward to that conversation.
All right, so yes.
It would be easier for me to vote on this if I knew if there was support on recognizing all employees. Because I, that matters to me how I vote on this.
Right.
Why wouldn't we? I have an impression for that.
Maybe. It's limited, we don't have unlimited money.
Everyone understands we're going to vote on the amendment first and change it to $500. And then once, if that passes or fails, then we vote on the, it would be the amended if it passes, then it would be the original one if it doesn't.
And just to clarify, it's all law enforcement employees and all dispatchers? Right, that includes the bailiffs, the marine, support staff?
Yes.
Just want to make sure we all were in the same picture.
So all those in favor, raise your hand for the amendment. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Motion passes 5 to 2. Now, we'll vote on the amended motion, which would be for $500 for all law enforcement.
So the first one, 5 to 2, we were just voting on the dollar amount. Now you're putting a bad end to say who it all covers.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm lost on this.
Now, it's an amended motion now. The amendment passed, so it becomes part of the motion. So the motion is amended from $1,000 to $500.
So you are, you are just applying for the state of Michigan at this point?
Yes.
So make sure that you all.
Just for law enforcement.
And dispatchers.
And the dispatchers, yes. So all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, do the same sign. So the motion passes 6 to 1. Yes, does everybody understand that?
Yeah. We don't need to deal with the MERS issue until.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. We don't need to deal with the MERS issue until we have approval.
Well, let me explain, if you wish to give stipends to the other employees, you may want to make that contingent on getting approval for the 500 for the law enforcement because you don't want to create a situation where you pass a motion to give 500 to the non-law enforcement people. And then unlikely, but if we get turned out for the CARES Act reimbursement, you'd have yourself in a situation.
That wasn't what I was asking about, I was asking.
So MERS, you make that decision, you can make that decision after, if you pass a motion to give the other employees 500 or any amount.
You're talking about the law enforcement to include the, if it, do we need to make that decision now?
What do you do for law enforcement, dispatchers, any other group? You do not have to make that decision.
Until we know if it fits the mindset.
That's a completely separate issue.
Commissioner Anderson.
To comply with the requirements of the CARES Act, do we have to do this by resolution or just a simple motion?
No, you just have to, Mr. Bonick simply has to sign this once I fill this. It's an application.
It's why they pay you the big bucks.
We could wait for the other employees until we find out on the status of this request, right? We do not have to take action tonight. Even, it doesn't have to be contingent upon, we just don't do it until we find out
Right.
if in fact we're successful.
Exactly.
Right?
Yes, you do not have to make that decision. And at that point, if we get notification that our application was successful, then you have to make a decision about MERS and other employees. If you, if we find out we were not successful and the front of it dried up, then you would, obviously, it's a moot point at that point. Unless you want to use county accounts.
All right, so I'd like to move on to community development law program.
Just a quick update. And this is a tie-in, but it's a separate program. I think I mentioned last week, we were, when the counties notified that we were eligible, this is not a competition. Each county was assigned a specific government. For Lillenaw County, it's $368,000 potential. We simply had to say if there's interest. And of course, there's interest. So we submitted a letter saying we're interested in potential reimbursement. This is for the entire county, so it covers all units of government in Lillenaw County. So last week, I met with the fire chiefs, informed them about it. And then last Friday, I met with, I invited township officials and village officials to participate. Most are telling me they have very few or no expenses. And so, most of them are saying they will not be applying. Thank you for including them, but they could not come up with expenses. These are reimbursable. So it's not like when the prosecutor or the sheriff came, you can ask for equipment upfront and hope to get reimbursed. This is reimbursable from January 20th. So we have kept track of every penny. I believe the deadline for counties to make decisions this week, probably next week or two, the state will assign someone to work with me to go through the process because all we have is a simple overview of Q and A on what's eligible. So I can't give you a list saying, we're going to get reimbursed for this or not. We're hoping we get reimbursed for all our costs. But our costs are $25,000 approximately, right, Jen? I think the last time, I think the last time we looked, well, $25,000. That includes the extra custodial, all the supplies, the Plexiglas, everything that we have done. But most townships are telling me they have very little or no expenses too. So I'm not sure at what point we'll be ready to submit a proposal. I'll keep this on the agenda, and I'll keep you updated where we are once we get more specific information.
Commissioner Anderson.
Lillenaw County provides NMCAA funding for Meals on Wheels. Is some of that reimbursable?
Could be, I just, it's hard to tell at this point. It has to be monies that we have paid though, or under, that's a unit of government in Lillenaw County that they have spent the money, so that could be.
We have spent money.
Yeah, yeah.
And is, you know, I'm just putting it on your radar that that's a question we need to ask. Because we do spend, we do spend money for that.
Do the "we" apply for that, or does Grand Terre County apply for which county and what percent? You know, that's the.
We would apply for the money that we spent.
But have we allocated additional dollars? We have not, that's the challenge.
Well, I just.
I mean, it's complicated, yes. But those are very. But those are very complex questions. It sounds great in theory, but based on what I've been reading and what I have discussed with people, it's going to be very difficult for us to get up to that dollar amount, which is fine. That means the money just goes back to some other public. And as you know, these counties kind of flew in and they kind of changed. It seemed sometimes week to week, month to month. So it's hard to say. One thing we're looking at is housing. You know, we have a housing program. There's some serious needs there. We do not have the resources. If you look at the grant, there may be some opportunity there. So truly, I don't look at that. You know, Meals on Wheels is a good example. We're providing food for the needy. That is one of the bullet points that they put there. But there's no definition of what that means yet.
So I'm just putting it on the radar.
We're going to do everything we can to get reimbursed.
You might have gone to school. I don't have.
Schools are not, no, they have, that's a separate.
They run buses for food.
Yeah, that's a, no, they run buses. Well, once again, it's.
Yeah.
I think that's why they're going to assign a specific person to each county to work on that.
Any other questions? All right, then we'll move on then to the POM. And we're not going to go into closed session. We have a memorandum here from our lawyer firm, law firm. And someone would make that order, I appreciate it.
I move the Board of Commissioners pre-ratified and approves the employer's proposal in the form provided to the union on August 11, 2020. In the event that the union ratifies this proposal, the board chair is authorized to execute the successor collective bargaining agreement incorporating these terms upon review and approval by corporate counsel.
Good point. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 7 to 0. Thank you very much. Now we have a Polycom.
This is a follow-up from our discussion of this afternoon on the budget. As you know, we, the whole world is evolving constantly. When we first started using Polycom, it was a novel approach a year and a half ago. We started using it in March on a rubber basis. We talked about buying one in the future. We said we had a discussion in our budget process. But first, an example, as you realize, today, we are second in line to use the Polycom. It's owned by the court. Generally, they have first choice. But we had to cancel a budget meeting and reschedule one just because the courts changed their schedule, which could happen anytime. So at some point, we may have a situation if we don't have a second Polycom, that we'd be in conflict with our board meeting, and yet we have to provide access to the public's and for commissioners too. So did you see, we did go through the Michigan website, got quotes three months ago. We're in the process of going back to them, see if they're, are those quotes. I put them out, not to exceed 9,500. I'm confident we can buy all the equipment and the TV. This will be a portable unit. So a Polycom is separate. And then we would have to buy the stadium and the TV as we did here. But based on the quotes, I think we can do it for $9,500 or less. I don't have a contract. I don't have a company. Because we have to go back to the ones that bid to see if they're still holding their prices.
Commissioner West.
Yes, I move to allow the administrator to approve the purchase of a Polycom system in an amount not to exceed $9,500, with funds to come from the Board of Commissioners' capital outlay account pending in .970.000.
Support. Commissioner answer it.
The only thing I would like to make sure is that if we get a second system that is compatible with the way this system is hooked up.
They will be.
Okay.
And this is an example that maybe we can try to get reimbursed. This is, is it a direct result of COVID? I could argue yes. If it was for COVID, would we be buying a second Polycom system? Probably not. So once again, the community block grant, this may be something that we could potentially get reimbursed for.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 7 to 0. Thank you very much. So then that brings us now, are there any review financials? No. See, none. How about committee reports? Staff? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention, I wrote an email quickly today, but it appears to me as though the Northwest Michigan College has been chosen to be part of a, some sort of a drone program. I didn't get all the specifics, but I did want to mention that today. So watch for the news to come out. I think it's going to be an advantage to the community as far as, you know, technology, new jobs, that kind of thing. So I was pretty excited to hear that NMCA was part of this programming.
I can follow up with that. NFC is one of the few colleges that actually have an associate's degree in drones.
Right.
Probably, they were at the very beginning, it's probably close to 10 years old now. So they were definitely in the cutting edge. And this advances that program partnership.
And I know people that have been hired by the military, went out and hired them just because of that program.
Yes, yes.
Sophie, your buzzing noise, maybe getting pictures taken up.
Well, my question was going to be, is this going to be done at the airport?
I just, I heard it.
I'm teasing.
I'm sure that there's going to be something because they do have.
No, the program is part of the airport facility that college has.
Right, yeah.
It's part of it.
Yeah. We have a through-the-fence arrangement with them where they can use the airport, so.
How about staff or commissioner, affiliated agencies? No? All right. So then we have public comment. If, is anyone here? Yes, please come forward. If you want to have a public comment, please call 231-256-8109.
Sheriff Mike Barkbich, public comment. Just, it strikes me today, that's 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. I can't imagine my grandparents, mother, wife, sisters, daughters, future grandda- I can't imagine we ever had a time in this country when they didn't allow women to vote. I don't get stuff like that, but I'm glad that they're acknowledging it today. That we went through that dark time period in our country where women weren't allowed. I don't get it. You're born in a one-to-one sex ratio, why should one vote, not the other? So I'll make it short and sweet. I'm very happy to hear that it's being acknowledged by the county board, by the president, by everybody who's talking about it. It's an important thing, and that's all I have to say about that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your call. Yes, we have a caller here. Okay, go ahead. Hello?
Hello?
Go, go ahead and speak, please.
This is John Hope. I was supposed to, I got three, three quick items there. You should probably interview those road commission applicants in October, because there may be certain individuals that may then stay or withdraw at election time. The second thing on that subject is you need to approve the questions that you asked in that last call around to ensure that the candidate is obligated to attend many of the state and local road commission related meetings. And this person also needs to have computer access and knowledge because the road commission approves payables and accounts payables online, including payroll. This person needs to have public and governmental skills and also knowledge about the road commission regulations. And I'm sure you can put those in your questions. Third, in addition to the elections in November, there's also a two-week-long year-long holiday. Have a good evening.
Thank you, John. Thank you. If there's anyone else, the line's been busy, please call 231-256-8109. Now, are there any commissioner comments at this time? Commissioner West.
I, Peachy referenced the Title Track Professional Development, sponsored by, co-sponsored by the Rotary Charities. And I'd like just to hand this out and ask that we put this, this program on the agenda for the, for the next executive committee meeting to talk about this as a possible training experience in racial justice. So I will hand that out.
Too late. Can you still add now another public comment?
Okay, sir, go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Daniel Marcarina with the 8200 East Wolfie Porcher Road in Elwood Township. Just sort of a follow-up comment to communicate gratitude to those commissioners who in the last week have been engaging regarding the resolution. I guess it was initially framed at the resolution for anti-racism. I would appreciate that engagement as well as viewpoints shared by commissioners tonight regarding which means the multiple perspectives. And I want to especially acknowledge and encourage that commitment to training, which commissioners and additional county employees may be able to undertake in continuing to build a broad perspective for actions that can uphold, as it was stated, equality, equity, and inclusion of all people in our county. I just think this is going to not work as well as in the purview of county government to be discussing this issue and making commitments to positive change. And in ending my comment, I just want to encourage commissioners not to distract from this issue with bringing up other issues and to withhold their commitment to representing our county and local governments, you know, in a dignified way. When commissioners, I think, distract from this very important issue of the adverse impact of racism by pointing out maybe unrelated examples to what those impacts specific to our county, I think it brings embarrassment in this race and the way that this issue was vaulted into national media certainly, with an embarrassment to me as a proud resident here. So I just encourage commissioners to stick to this course of improvement. And thank you very much for considering this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there, if there's anyone else wants to call in, it's been busy, is 231-256-8109. Any other commissioner comment? While we're waiting.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify my remark about frivolous spending. I was not making any remarks against our court's office. The thought that came to my mind when I made that statement was us going ahead and moving forward with filling the fish pond at Corralica Valley. And the cost of that was $5,000. So it was okay for us to go ahead and spend money, 5,000 for fish that we know were never going to die, most of them, or support our sheriff. So that's why I used that statement.
Can we have another public comment?
Thank you for the time.
Okay, go ahead and speak now, please. Ma'am?
Hello? Yes.
Go ahead.
This is Sabrina Ice. I'm calling as a former resident of Leland County. I live in Elway, Mo. And I just wanted to applaud the commissioners for taking the step forward in committing to anti-racism, to naming racial equity as a goal. And to say that I hope this will be the, this is an ongoing set of actions and a deep commitment to advancing racial equity in the community. I would name that I hope that there could be consideration of policies like with a cooperation with ICE. People who are tested on non-binary census. I would ask that we arrest the abuse by the sheriff's office, given the substantial amount of money that goes to that office that is funded that does data on their race and ethnicity of people who do interact with law enforcement. And then I would ask that the county consider opportunities to address and repair our harms that indirectly has led them to native members of our county. Again, I'm much flattered this evening to come from Leland County to call it, you know, my home whenever I can, and my parents' home. And I am encouraged about the steps that life has involved you. And I really hope you will commit continued action. Thank you so much for being responsible to the many, many people who have been placed and are further attached to common health.
Thank you. I'm sorry, ma'am. Did you say where you were from?
I grew up in Leland County, roughly in the west of Elway.
Okay, and now you're living where?
And now I live in the right state of Pennsylvania. I'm so with them.
Okay, thank you very much. Bye-bye.
That's me. So the line has been busy. If there's any other calls, please call 231-256-8109. Or then commissioner answer it.
If I can make.
Yeah, I'll make it while we're waiting.
If I can make comments. I am very pleased with the work that was put in by the people working on the racism resolution. I was not part of that, but I was very pleased that you were able to come to a consensus on a resolution that we could all support. And I applaud your efforts and I appreciate you making that effort because I know it was not an easy thing. So thank you very much. There was a lot of misinterpretation of positions out there. And I'm pleased that we got through that and everybody can actually see what we agree on. Thank you.
Commissioner Reddick.
Just want to say how much I appreciate the empathy of my fellow committee on the racism resolution. It was very enlightening to get together with people of color who had input into that in our drafting of the resolution. And it really helped, I think, to be able to pass it in the form that it did. And I much appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Walsh.
Yes, I will echo that. It was a great suggestion to bring others in. I know we heard from some people from the van who perhaps seem a little concerned that we had left them out. And I think that was certainly not our intent. Thank you, Tony, for your comments just now about the, your earlier statement too of the misrepresentation of positions. And thank you, Patricia, for speaking with one of my constituents too and explaining that there was a misrepresentation of what happened last week. And I appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
Any other comments? We have no other phone calls or anything. So then we move on then to approval of financials. I think we have one, one amendment or transfer.
I would move to approve on transfer number 20-005.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 7 to 0.
I would move to approve claim for the cash.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 7 to 0.
I would ref, I would move to approve post-audit.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 7 to 0. Your turn.